Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 6, 2025, Tumwater City Council. We will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff?
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson?
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy?
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout?
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser?
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe?
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holdz?
She is excused this evening.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan?
And I'm here. Please join me in our salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have several items on our several special items. And the first item is proclamation for Bike Month. And Councilmember Swarthout will be reading that.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas bicycling is one of the most energy-efficient forms of transportation ever invented, and is a mode of transportation well-suited to urban environments where trips are short in length and overly congested roads are difficult and costly to expand. And whereas transportation accounts for about half of carbon dioxide emissions from fossil fuel in Washington State and adds to the problem of climate change. And whereas bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, and congestion. And whereas bicycling makes people healthier and more productive, prevents chronic diseases through physical activity, improves cardiovascular health, reduces stress, and supports physical, emotional, and mental well-being. And whereas the National Nonprofit Bicycling Safety and Education Association, the League of American Bicyclists, has declared the month of May to be National Bike Month for each of the last 68 years and has done so again in 2025. And whereas the City of Tumwater supports healthier alternatives to inefficient drive-alone trips, particularly for travel around the city, by building bicycle facilities and participating in Wheel Options Commute Trip Reduction Campaign. And whereas InterCity Transit, with many sponsors, including local and regional businesses and organizations, is hosting the 38th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May 2025. And therefore Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tumwater, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 Bicycle Month. In the City of Tumwater and in recognition of National Bicycle Month and Clear Air Month, encourages all residents to put forth their best effort to reduce single-occupant motor vehicle trips to reduce air pollution, energy consumption, and traffic congestion.
Great, thank you. We have Duncan Green online. And he and I will Duncan, I will make sure you get this proclamation. And but if you have a few words you would like to say, you're certainly welcome to do that now.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for getting me onto the Zoom too. So and I wish I could be there in person. But I just got off of the Zoom for the Lacey City Council from the Lacey City Council. So couldn't have made it over there in time. With that said, for the record, my name is Duncan Green, and I'm here representing InterCity Transit and the Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge, or BCC for short. And most the biggest reason I'm here is just to say thank you to Mayor Sullivan and the council for proclaiming May as Bicycle Month in the City of Tumwater. And as noted in the proclamation, May is also National Bike Month. The month-long Bicycle Community Challenge is our local celebration, along with Bike to Work or Anywhere Day, which is on May 15 this year. The BCC and all of its events are free of charge, and everyone is encouraged to participate. You can log in or create a free account at bccintercitytransit.com to join. And also, as noted in the proclamation, we have many local and regional sponsors supporting the BCC with everything from donating prize items, offering discount coupons and free passes, support and venues for our events, and more. So we have lots of great prizes and amazing community support. Every year we have a new theme, and this year's theme for the BCC is Be a Beacon for Bicycling. And on that note, I just wanted to widen the spotlight a little bit from the Bicycle Community Challenge, in particular, to include InterCity Transit's Walk and Roll Program as a whole. Walk and Roll has grown into a true beacon for bicycling with a burgeoning roster of classes, activities, volunteer opportunities, and creative ways to get people on bikes and keep bikes in use by people who need them. We're partnering with schools, the statewide Bicycle Club, Cascade Bicycle Club, several community organizations to provide education, resources, and bikes in a wide variety of settings. We teach kids and adults how to ride safely and how to maintain and equip their bikes. We have a growing pool of dedicated volunteers helping on all of these initiatives. And there's literally too many activities at Walk and Roll to list in one sentence. So please just check us out on the InterCity Transit website under the Services tab and find out all the awesome things that we're doing over there. The BCC has begun last week, so it's time to ride in the 38th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge for fun, health, and a cleaner, greener community. It's easy to participate as an individual or as a member of a team. Just go to bccintercitytransit.com and sign up or log into your existing account. And you can reach out to me at any time if you have any questions. My email is dgreen@intercitytransit.com. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have now as well. But just want to say thanks and get out there on your bikes.
I just want to say thank you. You've been doing this for a number of years. And 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 I know that these events and these programs take a lot of work. So I really appreciate all your hard work for making these these things happen. So. And I will get you your proclamation.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, next item is the proclamation for the 56th Municipal Courts Week. And Councilmember Althouser will be reading that.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and is among the oldest public servants. And the Municipal Clerk's whereas the Municipal Clerk's Week was initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, also known as IIMC, and endorsed by all of its members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. In 1984 and 1994, Presidents Ronald Reagan and Bill Clinton respectively signed proclamations officially declaring Municipal Clerk's Week the first full week of May and recognizing the essential role municipal clerks play in local government. And whereas IIMC is pleased to announce the 56th Annual Municipal Clerk's Week, May 4 through May 10, 2025. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas municipal clerks continually serve to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas the City of Tumwater benefits from the dedicated public service of those who perform the vital functions of the municipal clerk, including City Clerk Melody Valiant, Deputy City Clerk Tracy Core, and several staff members who serve as liaisons to city boards, commissions, and committees. Now, therefore Debbie Sullivan, the Mayor of the City of Tumwater, does hereby proclaim the week of May 4 to May 10, 2025 Municipal Clerk's Week, and calls upon the City of Tumwater to celebrate all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Great, thank you. And I can tell you, we would not survive here without municipal clerks. So Melody will be accepting the proclamation and saying a few words.
Melody Valiant, City Clerk. And thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for taking for giving my office the opportunity to celebrate municipal clerks. And especially the Clerk's Office here in Tumwater, which is comprised of myself and Tracy Core, Deputy City Clerk. We do a lot of things that are statutorily required that are kind of behind the scenes. But we work very hard to give the best service we can to our community and staff and elected officials. So thank you.
And I want to say thank you. And you received a pen.
I was gonna say, I don't have a pencil.
Yeah, no, you got a pen. All right, our other proclamation is for Emergency Medical Services Week. And Councilmember Agabe will be reading that.
Mayor, could I say something before he starts?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Cathy.
I just also wanted to say a few words about Valerie as our clerk. She, for many years off and on, has served alone as our clerk. And I think she's done a wonderful job, you know, over the years we've been through things that have just put all kinds of pressure on clerk's work. And I personally want to thank her for what she's done because it makes it easier to be a councilmember and know that someone that's efficient and dedicated is behind us in doing that work, or sometimes ahead of us in doing that work. So I just wanted to thank her as a councilmember.
Thank you, Joan. Yes, thank you. And and I have to say, she has not had help until just recently, in the last year. So yeah, so she has been doing this solo for a very long time. So I appreciate that. Next item is a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. And Councilmember Agabe will be reading that.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, whereas emergency medical services, vital public services that provides life-saving and supporting care to the people of Tumwater 24 hours a day and seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care automatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical service team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas the people of the City of Tumwater recognize the need for and initiated a countrywide emergency medical services system since 1974. Emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize, honor, and promote the value of the accomplishment of emergency medical services providers and the Thurston County Medic One Emergency Medical Services System by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tumwater, do hereby proclaim May 18 to 20 to May 18 to 24, 2025, Emergency Medical Services Week. In the City of Tumwater, she encourage people to join in this observance to recognize those who give so much of themselves and consistently rise to the challenge for the safety and health of others, signed in the City of Tumwater, Washington, this 6th day of May in the year 2025.
Thank you. I believe we have Fire Chief here to accept the proclamation. Do you have a few words? And I see we have a few of our finest also joining us. Thank you.
Girls, I'll just say a few words quickly here, Bright and Hurley Fire Chief. Thank you, Councilmember Agabe, Mayor Sullivan, and council for this recognition. It was mentioned in the proclamation that we do have, it's a system, right? It goes from, you know, teaching the public how to do CPR, calling 911, response from Fire EMS, law enforcement, you know, through the ambulances and paramedics transporting folks to the hospital to the hospital teams. You know, it really is a system, and we've got a great system here in this county. Of roughly the, you know, 6,000 calls we run a year, about 75% are emergency medical services-related. And of our staff here in Tumwater, we have 59 staff who are either certified as a paramedic or an emergency medical technician to provide that care. Fortunately, we are able to rope a few of them to be here tonight. Paramedics Paul Porter, Joe Williamson, and John McLean. John is amongst the group that we just hired to help us staff medicate in the in the coming year. So yeah, thank you very much.
All right, I appreciate everything they do. And every time we have firefighters in the room, I swear a couple of minutes before I do we do the presentation, they get a radio call. So I was very happy that that did not happen this time. Our next item under Special Items is Joint Animal Services Update by Sarah Hock, who is the Executive Director. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council for having me again. It's always a pleasure to come and present to Tumwater City Council to talk about everything that we have done over 2024. There we go. So hold on, there we go. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't skip a slide. We had 2024 was a really amazing year for Joint Animal Services. We had a total of over five, almost over 5,000 hours for volunteers, which was a total of 140 volunteers. And they averaged about 40 hours per volunteer. So when you look at the national volunteer management organizations, they have said that Washington values volunteers at about $40 an hour. And so with the amount of volunteer hours that we had last year, we had the equivalent of 2.75 full-time equivalent employees, which saved our organization over $200,000 in additional labor and help around the shelter. Volunteers do everything from walking dogs to cleaning kennels to doing laundry, database entry. They are lobby greeters. They do events. They help with adoptions. They are a complete in every facet of everything that we do. And we don't necessarily distinguish our volunteers from our employees. Everybody is a team at Joint Animal Services. We had 350 cats go into foster, along with 77 dogs, 18 critters, for a total of 445 animals into foster last year. And we also had our first court case foster in 2024, which is a big accomplishment for us. There's a lot of legal and liability around animals involved in court cases going into foster. And so we had a very special case where we had our first foster willing to take that on, which is quite exciting. And this year, while it's not up on the slide, we have created a new program specifically. It's our Cruelty Response Volunteer Program for fosters and volunteers who are recruited very specifically, have background checks done, and have a very extensive training with our field team, as well as our forensic veterinarian, to help support our field services officers in capacities, both out in the field and then support as fosters once we have to remove animals from cases. We were also at 25 community events. And one of the things we are most proud of is our creation of the Animal Allies Club with the Timberland Library, both in the City of Lacey and now in Yelm. It's a monthly club meeting where we meet with kids. There is an art project. They learn about specific animals. And usually some of the craft projects involve toys or other items that can be brought back for the shelter animals. 2024 was also our first full year that we had a veterinary department, where we had both our veterinarian and veterinary assistant. This year, we are, it is in the budget, and we are hiring a licensed veterinary tech so we can round out our very small but mighty department to three. But last year, with two, two team members, we did over 2,000 exams on animals, over 1,200 spay-neuter surgeries, along with 64 additional surgical procedures, such as leg amputations and eye removals, as well as tumor removals and other surgeries that may not have happened otherwise, thanks to the fact that we have onsite veterinary care now. Some other achievements are Animal Welfare and Field Manager Sierra Tees was elected to the Washington Animal Care and Control Association's Board of Directors. I was also elected to the National Animal Care and Control Association's Board of Directors through my colleagues and peers. Intake has continually increased year over year. We saw a drop, as if you guys remember, during the pandemic. And we've slowly been making our way upwards. The good news is, is that even though we've seen an increase in overall intake, we have reduced our average length of stay from 11 days in 2023 to seven days in 2024. So the average length of stay for an animal in the shelter is only seven days. This is another way to look at the intake breakdown. Before, we had strays, owner surrenders, custody, with our total at the end, with a total of 3,305 animals last year. Breaking that down, you can see where we have dog, cat, wildlife. Wildlife for us is not all forms of wildlife. It usually consists more of orphaned wildlife, such as baby raccoons or possums that we need to find a rehab center for. Other is pocket pets, so your gerbils, parrots, guinea pigs, along with reptile snakes, parrots, anything that is considered a companion animal. And then cats, 2024 is in the red, so you can see we actually had less cats come in over 2023. Dogs, however, we have seen a progressive increase year over year. And last year, we finished with an increase of over 27% in dogs intake into the shelter. Intake by jurisdiction, this is just a little breakdown so you guys can see by the four jurisdictions what intake looks like. Thurston County is at 46%, Olympia 25, Lacey 21, and Tumwater is at 8%. Positive outcomes are also on the rise. So when we have increase in intake, we also have increase in our positive outcomes. We saw an increase in adoptions. We did see a decrease in transfers, but that's okay. It's very hit or miss year over year when we have partner shelters taking from us. Our return to owner is pretty static when it comes to stray animals being returned to their owners. And we have also seen an increase in our community cap program. An example of one of these positive outcomes is Cinder. Cinder was a three-year-old tabby mix. She was found as a stray in July after being hit by a car. She received lifesaving care from our veterinary team, as well as our foster team. She actually underwent three different critical surgeries while she was in our care. She had a leg amputation. She also had a pyometra that was removed and an abdominal hernia repair. This would not have been done otherwise had we not had a veterinarian in-house. And so she was also able to recover for weeks after that in a foster home. And so now she is a very happy, healthy, fluffy cat. I actually just saw a picture of her the other day. Her foster mom brought me a photo. Field response is also up. You can see statistically, year over year, field response has gone up with the majority of the calls being in Thurston County. And then second is City of Olympia for number of calls and responses. Last year Olympia saw an increase of 11%, Lacey 21%. Tumwater, you guys saw an increase of 10%, 8% in field calls, while Thurston County rounded it off with 23.5% increase in field calls. We averaged about 18.6 over last year total. Some of our field casework also included these livestock guardian dogs. So in mid-July, we went out with TCOSO and conducted a welfare check for multiple animals, including livestock. That's why TCOSO was there. We were there for the 40 Great Pyrenees dogs. The 40 Great Pyrenees had actually resulted in really a lack of veterinary care. So the owner had originally purchased eight, did not have the money to spare neuter those eight livestock guardian dogs. And it greatly got out of hand quickly. So we were out there because they had inadequate shelter, which you would for 40 dogs, right? And so we wanted to get creative with the solution. Because again, when we look at our animal control and field work when we're out into the community, we want to only go out to a place once. We want to solve the issue. We don't want to go back over and over again. And so when we got creative with this and talked with the owner and learned what happened, our solution was to work with the owner to get him down to his original eight. So we partnered with him, and week after week, he would bring us a couple of his dogs. We would alter them and then adopt him back so that it was at a lower rate. So he would surrender them to us. We would do the surgeries, and then he would adopt them back. They would be vaccinated, spayed and neutered, would have their license, and he would pay our adoption fee of $90 versus the surgery fee, which for a large dog could be upwards of $1,000 apiece. So he is down to his original eight. We also worked with a shelter partner who took some of the adoptable puppies and were able to place all those. So there was live outcomes for everybody. And then he was down to his original eight after everything was said and done. Also, this is a great example. We had two of our officers were actually leaving a call when they came across two dogs wandering loose. They immediately stopped, was looking for ID, scanning for a microchip, while they started patrolling the neighborhood with the dogs. Because again, one of our policies is to check in the neighborhood first, right? If we can do a free lift home and the owner doesn't have to come to the shelter, that's what we want to do. And so after about 20 minutes of driving the neighborhood, the owner actually flagged them down to tell them that they lost their dog. We had both in the back of the van and were able to reunite there onsite. Now, after we've talked a little bit about our stats and review, we're going to get into talking a little bit more about the results of our Space Needs Assessment. If you, if if City Council remembers, last year I came to you with a brief update about where we were as far as the Space Needs Assessment that has since been complete. And just to go over, you know, a few things. When we originally did our capital facilities plan back in 2023 with the City of Lacey, we were labeled the second worst building in the city, and we received a failing grade. When we did the capital facilities plan, they had estimated in 2022 dollars, sorry. I said 2023, it was 2022. And those dollar amounts did not actually account for site acquisition or development. They had only given us a rough estimate of about $30 million to build a building. And they estimated at that time, we would need not quite a 27,000 square foot building. So when we got the contract with Animal Arts, they came back with their initial concept, and it was about 30,000 square feet. We did a very tight review of that to really make sure we were being fiscally responsible. We did a very tight review of that to really make sure we were being fiscally responsible, that we had a building that would fit our needs, and that we weren't building a building that was too large, too small, just right. Excuse me. And so we went through a second concept and finally came to what I will be showing Council tonight, which is our revised, revised value engineering concept, which is just under 20,000 square feet. And I apologize, it is a little small up on the screen, but I know you guys also have it to look later. And you can see that it's broken out into different areas. So we have the dark blue, it would be our dog kennels. Anything that is in red is where the public can be with our adoption lobby, as well as our pet resource center and intake lobby. Green is our cat adoption area. The kind of light blue are kennels that are in the back that aren't for public viewing. Any of the gray area is more storage space, including laundry, food prep areas, Sallyport's hallways, different things like that. Lavender is staff space. The kind of maroonie lavender is a flex space that can be used for both staff, like a conference room, training center, or could be overfill if we have a large-scale intake. That room could be flexed to hold animals as well. The orange that you see at the top would be veterinary clinic. This is one of the really great things about this structure is not only do we have the vet facility actually in-house, whereas if you've seen before, it's in a mobile unit in the back. But this has all been designed specifically for staff flow through the shelter, for operational efficiencies, public flow through the shelter, as well as the least amount of movement needed for dogs and cats to get where they need to go. What's not shown here in some of this engineering is on the blue side with the kennels, there's actually play yards out right next to them, down at the bottom. And of course, there's parking and everything that was taken into account with this. So the grand total for this design, you are looking at anywhere between 33 million to 41.5 million dollars. The variant really comes down to the bulk of it being site acquisition and site development. As most of you know, you know, sometimes the cheaper the land, the more you have to develop the site, not just in making sure it's level to build, but making sure utilities, sewer, and everything can be connected along with sidewalks and roads. So that is one of our largest variants that we have going. And then there can be some tweaking of building costs. We wanted to make sure that that wasn't a firm number, because of course, things can fluctuate moving forward. Soft cost doesn't just include contracts or even contingency plans. It also includes any of the FFNE and equipment that would be needed inside of the building. So some of the things for partners to consider is our veterinary services area, what possible revenue sources that we can be utilizing to help build the building, what that financial model looks like, and the financial tools that we can use to achieve our objectives with this. So for example, some of the other revenue sources that we're looking at, we have roughly a little over $1 million in reserves that we can put towards the build currently. There's a little bit of an update from this. So we did ask the state for $2 million in funding to contribute to design. It looks like we will probably get 1 million, which is, thanks to Representative Parsley for advocating for that. We're probably estimating getting about 500,000 in grant funding. And grant funding in this sense is not your typical government grant funding. This is from private foundations such as like Petsmart Charities or Pet Co. or Matty's Fund that contribute to animal welfare grants such as this. We do have the property sale as well to contribute to the overall cost of building the building and potentially looking at local donations. So that still leaves us anywhere from 26 million to 34 million dollars when it comes to costs of the facility. Additional partner considerations is what financial we may want to consider using for this. Are we looking at a levy? Are we looking at a bond? There is the idea of an animal control district being proposed next year to help create a funding mechanism. But currently, what is written into our inter-local agreement is the cost of any loan repayment shall be borne at a per capita basis. So currently, as the ILA has written, this is what any financial burden would be taking on. And with that, I will open it to questions.
Great. Any questions? Councilmember Altuser.
Thanks. It's really good to see you. I spent the first, I think, three or four years on council as a member of Jazzcom, so it's really exciting to see some of these plans kind of be more solidified and coming closer to fruition. In terms of the financing model, I think you mentioned, mentioned a special district. Is that kind of an independent countywide taxing authority? Or what does that actual entity look like?
So there is still a little bit, there still needs to be a little bit more work done with this. Representative Parsley is very interested in sponsoring this. So what it would look like would be as any jurisdiction forms a water district or like a transportation district, where you would have the option as a jurisdiction to form that. You could, as a city, choose to or a county. It really depends on the jurisdiction itself to create the district. And they're looking at several options of how that could potentially be created, whether it's councilmatic, whether it's something that goes to the voters. We're doing a little bit more of research and talking with constituents about what might that look like and be the best option. We've seen a lot of support from this, from other jurisdictions statewide. If we do do this, speaking from like an animal welfare perspective, we would be one of the first ones in the country to try something like this. So we would be a testing ground for funding for a department being, you know, municipal animal services that are historically continually underfunded. And through no lack of, you know, anything wrong, it's when you're making choices between people and animals, right? People come first. And so this would remove animal services out of that general funding and have its own designated funding. And it could be something that's optional, not mandatory for jurisdictions to, if they decide they want to enact that animal control district as a funding mechanism.
So that's not something that exists right now as an option. It's something that our legislative delegation is considering pursuing.
Correct. Correct. It was briefly introduced into the House in 2025, but it unfortunately did not make one of its cutoffs. And so Representative Parsley has said that she will again put it forth next year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kathy, did you have a question or comment?
Oh, thank you. I have a question about, oh, well, first I should say, I also have served several years to be, for the beginning of my term or many terms on the animal services. And it was one of my favorite places to be, as long as I didn't have to go past any of the caged animals. Because if I came home with a dog or a cat every month, that would have not been good. And it's hard for me to walk through an animal shelter without wanting to bring an animal home. So I went directly into the meeting room each time I came, but I loved it. And I wanted to ask you if this seven-day limit for keeping an animal for adoption, you see it all as a hindrance to, to the animal or animals getting adopted?
So it's not a seven-day limit. So that is what our data pulls as an average length of stay for an animal. So when I, for example, when I first started at Animal Services, an average length of stay for an animal from the moment it entered the shelter until it was adopted was four weeks. Now, it's seven days. So animals are moving much faster through our system, which is a good thing. It saves money when it comes to being fiduciary responsible. It's also better for the animal to not stay in our system. The longer they're in our system, the more stressed out they can become, and they also have the potential for getting sick. And so it's actually a goal as an animal shelter to have a short length of stay, because it means you're moving animals through the system quickly and appropriately, so they're spending the least amount of time in the shelter as possible. So we went from when I first was there to four weeks, which means a month that an animal was sitting in a kennel before it could be, before it was adopted, to seven days.
I'm glad you explained that, because the way I heard it, maybe others listening out there tonight, thought that you were limiting to seven days. So if an animal wasn't adopted in seven days, it was moved on. So that's, that's kudos to you, average of, of seven days. One other question, I, I think it's great, you're people who want to volunteer at the shelter. It's, there are people just passionate about that. And I, I wondered, what areas do you, do you assign the people who want to volunteer? The area you most need, or do people get to choose, say, to be a dog walker or washer?
A little bit of both. So people can volunteer and get trained for any department that they want to be in and can opt in for times that are available. We try to recruit and push, and we'll have more volunteer orientations specifically for certain functions that perhaps we don't have as many volunteers for. So for example, we may only have, you know, a few times, like a week, that there's actually a spot open currently to walk dogs. However, I might have 10 different spots open during the week for laundry volunteers. And so we would more heavily recruit people interested in doing laundry for us and talk about the importance of that. But we are not going to deter anybody from doing what they want to do to volunteer. So that's why I say it's a little bit of both. We say that's great. You want to be here. You want to do this. Let's get you set up and trained. But can we also tell you about the things that we really need extra help with?
Great. That encourages people. No, that's good. And one final question, can you just tell us what are your greatest needs when people say, what can I donate other than my, other than myself or my time?
Absolutely. And again, yourself, your time is always a great thing to donate. If you're not ready to adopt a pet, fostering is a great alternative for that. Doesn't have to be a long-term commitment. We even have short-term Weekend Warrior fosters to longer foster commitments. But I would also say our, our needs change throughout the year. So we're getting ready to go into what we fondly call kitten season, which means the weather is warming up. We're going to get lots and lots of pregnant moms, orphaned kittens, moms nursing kittens. And so there's usually a higher need for mama baby cat food and formula as well as litter at this time of year.
And what about for dogs? Anything specific?
We can always use dog food, as well as toys that are a bit more on the indestructible side.
And as far as dog food, you want dry dog food, don't you?
Yep, but we also do take wet food. It helps also when we're giving medications to have wet food, but dry food is the preferred.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Gobby, did you have something?
Yes. Thank you, Sarah. One of the many things that I always brought up at our maintenance, there are several bodies that from Jazzcom. And late last year, as we were talking about our budget and we were looking at the new site, I asked a question if our budget managers at Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater are aware of the cost. And I believe at that point in time, I was told that where we will, they will find out, there's a way for them to find out. And Olympia also have the same issue too. Your presentation tonight didn't exactly tell us what is a potential cost for each of the jurisdictions, because we're talking about, what, 26 million in shortfall? So given your financing, potential financing mechanism, it doesn't acknowledge that each of the people that make up Jazzcom, Olympia, Tumwater, and Lacey have a potential body to meet.
No, and thank you for bringing that up. We actually had our first meeting with the jurisdictions with representatives chosen from each of the four jurisdictions in the ILA to talk about what our financial options would look like. And so those conversations are still going on. It was just our initial meeting specifically with staff, so we could start talking about what that's going to look like. Because some of the contributions could potentially change depending on how many, how much other revenue we can get from other sources, right? So it may not necessarily be a cost specifically to Tumwater, Olympia, Lacey, and Thurston County directly to pay those costs. It may come down to that the jurisdictions agree to have it bonded or do a levy. Or like I said, the animal control district. There is also, you know, different revenue sources that we could consider looking at. And so those discussions have already begun at a staff level. And that's why we haven't brought it, bubbled that up yet to discuss, because those numbers are not determined yet.
All right. That's good to know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Sforza.
Thank you. Do you have land already kind of figured out, sighted at this point? Has something popped up?
Land has been one of our more difficult acquisitions. And that is because there are specific parameters, right? We don't necessarily want to be in a residential neighborhood because of the noise. We also want to be close to the majority of our calls. And we also have to consider, since Lacey is still the fiduciary custodian and in charge of maintenanceing all of our building, we need to make sure that we're still within a reasonable driving distance of City of Lacey staff to be able to maintenance that building. So we're also looking, some of the parameters obviously needs to be zoned for an animal shelter to build on. We estimate somewhere between three and five acres is the size that we need to build. And we also would prefer transportation to be easy, so on a bus route, easily accessible for the community to reach us, especially if they do not have a vehicle.
Not too many obstacles.
No, not at all.
Councilmember Altuser.
You know, they're, they're building a nice, brand-new police department over there. They're gonna have a vacant building on their city campus, right?
I don't think that building could
Don't tell Andy that I was the one who mentioned that, but.
No, we joked, but seeing as how the LPD's building was labeled, we were the second, they were the first, as far as worst buildings in the city. I don't know if we necessarily want to downgrade if that's the case, but.
Fair, fair.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I, I agree with Councilmember Kathy. I, I would have difficulty walking in there and, and not coming home with some furry baby. Yeah, it would be very difficult. So I appreciate all the volunteers that are able to help you and do all that. And I just appreciate what you do and what your volunteers and your staff do.
Thank you so much. We're more than happy to facilitate bringing animals to you as well. Just saying.
Show and tell.
Show and tell, yeah. Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Next item is public comment. And we have a sign-up sheet. All right. So at this time, we're going to have public comment. You may comment on an item related to city business, but not scheduled for the, any public hearing, which we do not have a public hearing this evening. And so when I ask you to come to the podium, you state your name and your address for the record. And each individual will be limited to a three-minute period to make the remarks, regardless of the number of topics you wish to address. Speakers may not comment upon address. Speakers may not comment upon promotional, promote, advocate, or oppose, or speak against any pending initiative, ballot measure, or candidate. And all comments have to be directed towards the council as a whole and not to individual council members. And please refrain from any disruptive behavior. Okay, I have one person signed up. And sorry. Is it Karina Hollins?
My name is Courtney Murray-Holt House. My address is 5606 22nd Avenue Southeast, 98503. I filed a federal case against Tomwater Police Department, Washington Department Corrections, right down the street. Providence St. Peters Hospital and Multi-Care Lacey Emergency. Because I have been ongoingly retaliated against after speaking up against them about harm. I've been followed, denied assistance, mislabeled medically and digitally interfered with. I live like a fugitive. Not because I did anything wrong, but because I told the truth. And I would kindly like this room to know I'm dedicated to justice and the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I only had one member sign up. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak? Has anyone signed up online? They have not. Okay. So with that, we will now move to the consent calendar. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
So I send? Oh, wow.
We have a fast second. So moved by Councilmember Althauser. I'm saying Councilmember Swarthout. All those opposed, or all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right. The consent calendar has been approved. With that, we have approved the minutes to the City Council Work Session of March 25th. Minutes of the City Council Meeting of April 15th. Approval of the Council's special joint meeting with the Port of Olympia on April 29th. Payment vouchers, a grant, agreement, amendment number one with the Washington Recreation and Conservation Office for Percival Creek Project. Award a bid for the 2025 Pavement Maintenance Project for Lakeside Industrial and the Anston Sewer Project Contract with A&amp;D Enterprises LLC. With that, we will now move to council considerations. Ordinance number O 2025-003. Planning Commission Compensation, Composition, sorry, not compensation, composition. And we have Brad Mudrude to present.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Before you tonight is an ordinance that would reduce the size of our current planning commission from nine members to seven. State law gives the city pretty wide latitude in the number of members that could be potentially part of a planning commission, anywhere from three to 12. In 1984, the council made the decision to set the number at nine. Made some minor adjustments in 1993 to include representation potentially from our urban growth area. So this is the first change really in about 30-plus years to the composition of the planning commission. The reason for the change is really it's been very difficult to recruit members to fill of all nine positions. And it's been fairly rare that we've had nine positions filled all at once. I think it could be attributed to a number of different things. And one of the things to keep in mind is we have so many different volunteer opportunities available now in the community, either through the city or through other organizations. That I think people are really stretched in terms of what they can and can't do that way. So from the staff presented this to the General Government Committee last month's meeting, General Government Committee recommended that this be placed on consideration for the council meeting tonight. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those questions.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Althauser.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just sort of speak to it a bit. Because I was at the General Government Committee when we recommended it. And I've also had the experience of serving on the planning commission prior to joining the council. And it is, when we don't have quorum for meetings, you know, that's frustrating for the public. It's frustrating for the planning commission members and obviously also frustrating for staff when that is the case. So when we don't have nine members fully appointed to the commission, that doesn't mean our quorum changes. But it does mean that we need a higher percentage of the members that are members of the body to be present. That just makes it more difficult for the meetings to happen. I thought this made sense to advance because we have seven members on the council. And I certainly seem to think we function pretty well and are pretty representative of the community. So I felt comfortable with advancing this forward to have seven members on the planning commission as well. But if, if other folks have comments, I'll, I'll reserve before making a motion. So folks can, can say their thoughts if they have them as well.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Swarthout.
As far as recruiting, how, what have we been? As far as trying to recruit people, do we have a, like a plan or an active recruitment plan?
We have an ongoing recruitment. I think one of the things that we have learned, it's always good to have a number of people with potential interest available. As an example, I believe last year we had three new members all join. Two of them had to resign within the first six months because one moved out of the state or out of the community and the other one had to get a second job. So there are practical, practical reasons for wanting to have available candidates sent to them.
I think this is probably one of the harder committees to belong to as well. So I appreciate the work that the planning commission does for us. So and that you do with them as well to prepare us. So thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I was on the planning commission for 10 years. It is a very demanding position to be on. There's two meetings a month. And several times during the last year or so, I got all of the positions filled. And then two would drop off. And then I, and then you would have a few weeks or a couple of months where you wouldn't get any more applications, even though you're kind of advertising. So I think this will make it more manageable. And I, and I appreciate that you're taking this under consideration. Any other questions? All right. I'm ready for a motion. Councilmember Althauser.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I move that we adopt ordinance number O 2025-003 Planning Commission Composition as recommended by the General Government Committee at their April 15th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Althauser. And I believe, was it, was it Councilmember Kathy that seconded it?
Yeah, it was.
Great. Thank you. It's harder to tell online. So any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? All right. The motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Our next item is 93rd Avenue, Southwest and Case Road, 10% annexation petitions. And, and Brad, are you doing that one too? All right. So I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Melanie. So next slide, please. What's before the council tonight is a proposal, actually a petition that has been filed by two property owners who are on 93rd. Just west of Case Road. They are basically, because it's two property owners that are covering two exactly the properties, this is an annexation of basically the two parcels. So what I would like to do is sort of walk through the process that we have followed to this point. Talk a little bit about what the request of council is tonight. And then also sort of fit that into the larger picture. So you have an idea of how all this fits together. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, two owners of property on 93rd have filed petitions with the city requesting annexation. Those annexation petitions came in in February. They were deemed complete in March after the appropriate application fees were paid. And because of the two property owners also own all the property in the annexation area, they also filed petitions representing both the 10%, which is the initial step in the process, and also the 60% petition, which is the next step in the process. Next slide, please. So the important thing about the 10% petition and what its purpose is. It is essentially the opportunity for the council to decide whether or not they want to pursue this annexation or not. The, the council is under no obligation to accept an annexation petition. This is, this gives the council an opportunity to ask questions about it. Talk to staff about what the process may be. Talk to the applicants about why they're pursuing the petition, those kinds of things. To make sure it fits in with the, the council's strategic priorities and other things related to that. So the property owners as part of the petition have indicated that they're willing to accept a portion, their fair share of the city indebtedness, which essentially says that they will be treated like any other property owner within the city in terms of their, their taxation for the city. They're also willing to accept the current land use designations, which have already been established through the joint planning process. And we're not aware on the staff level of there any, pardon me, pending development applications for these particular properties. Next slide, please. The parcels together are about 10.74 acres in size. They're both zoned for light industrial with an airport overlay over a portion. And currently they're undeveloped aside from a house and some outbuildings. So this is potentially developable land if they would move forward. Next slide, please. Couple maps showing the location of individual properties. The first one, this is at 1020 93rd. Nathan Walsh owns this particular parcel. It's about 4.87 acres. It is that orange rectangle, which is on 93rd, which is just immediately east of the par, next parcel we'll talk about. Next part, slide, please. The next slide is also on 93rd. There's no site address with this. There's no building on it. This is owned by John and Diane Elwin, and it's about 5.87 acres. This is the parcel that immediately abuts the city limits, which are the black line there. Next slide, please. So the initial request, as I, I discussed, is the, is that the, essentially the 10% petition is a request that this petition be heard by the city council within 60 days of the filing of the application. We were within that 60-day timeframe when the applications were deemed complete in March. The decision really for the council is, will they consider accepting, rejecting, or geographically modifying the proposed annexation area? Either we don't want to deal with it, or we do as is, or we want to make a modification to it. It indicates at this time whether the council wants to consider a new land use designation for this property. And also whether the city council wants to have this property also assume its existing indebtedness similar to other properties within the city. I'll explain that a little bit further in detail. Next slide, please. So assumption of indebtedness, the annexation by Washington Cities and Towns, which is a handbook that MSRC had put out, notes that under annexation statutes, the council can require a property in the area to be annexed to assume as a condition of annexation, their per unit share of the annexing cities. Then outstanding indebtedness that has been proved by voters contracted or occurred prior to or existing at the date of annexation. So what that means essentially is for our purposes, for the purposes of property tax, that the obligations under the Metropolitan Park District and then the general government obligations through the city, which is its common taxation. And at the back of the staff report, I show you the things Harrison, that Finance Department put together showing the differences in tax rates between the county and the city. There's about a $10 difference on a $500, $500,000 residential development. So really, it's extending pretty much like-for-like. Fire service and road tax and the county level for our services plus the Metropolitan Parks District. Next slide, please. The flow chart for this process starts on the upper left-hand corner. Essentially, if the council moves ahead with this particular process, we start the 60% petition annexation. This is the meeting on the annexation proposal essentially. If the council approves that, because they have filed a 60% petition that represents all the property owners, we don't have to go out and do an election. Or they don't have to do the election or have approvals from any of the other property owners. Really, the next step is having the county assessor's office confirm the property signatures, which allows us to basically confirm that the applications are valid. And that meets the legal sufficiency of the petition requirement. After that time, the council will actually schedule a formal public hearing on the proposal. There is real, there's not a real structure established under state law for what that looks like. Essentially, it's providing an opportunity for those in favor or those against annexation to offer their opinions on the annexation. The council at that time will approve, if they choose to go forward with the annexation, a resolution. The resolution essentially says the council is, is in favor of this particular action, subject to Boundary Review Board review, which is the next step in the process. The Boundary Review Board then has the opportunity to review and provide comment and decide whether it favors the annexation or not. It has its own process. After that, if the Boundary Review Board approves it, it comes back to the council. At that point, the council will approve a ordinance, which essentially is the formal start of the annexation, saying this area is now formally annexed into the city. All that, from that follows a whole list of things in terms of noticing for annexation. As part of that process, as part of the, after the hearing on the petition, and at the same time, we do the review for, with the Boundary Review Board, which is an application process. We also would be working likely with the East Olympia Fire District, who has current area, that's their current area about that transition and what that would look like. Next slide, please. So the recommendation coming from the General Government Committee last month was to accept the proposal to annex with no modifications. That means no additional properties or properties taken away. No amendments to the existing land use designations or zone districts. Essentially, what has been established by the joint plan is, is what should go forward. And then also to require the annexed area to assume city indebtedness. Next slide, please. So the request for the council tonight is to discuss the petition with the applicants who are online and decide whether to move this forward to consideration as part of the process for considering the annexation. So I believe in remotely available are the two property owners, John Elwin and Nathan Walsh, as well as Ryan Haddock and Matt McLennan, who are representatives of the property owners from Kidder Matthews. I think we're done with this. So future steps. We've essentially, they've accomplished the first two by the fact that they've already submitted the 60-day, 60% petitions. But again, the final review would occur only after review and approval by the Boundary Review Board, following that public hearing by council. So this is really initiation of the process if the council chooses to go forward.
All right. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Althauser and then Councilmember Swarthout?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I don't think I have any questions on the annexation itself. I guess my question is more about sort of the impact it has on our existing workload. Like, there's no fiscal impact for us doing this, but it certainly takes time and effort and due diligence to follow through with all the different timelines that are required as well as the different steps in the process to conduct the annexation itself. I guess my question is by, by doing this and then adding it to our agenda, like, we hadn't anticipated that in the work plan. Are there other things that are in the work plan that will now be deferred to the future as a result of adding this to the agenda in that sense?
The, the short answer is no. We had actually anticipated we would be dealing with some annexation petitions this year. So we have budgeted time to deal with that. I should have said, not said. But we had, from our workload standpoint, it's something that we'll be able to accommodate.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Swarthout, and then I'll go to Councilmember Kathy.
So, we're not going to, this won't go until after the, decided until after the comp plan type of, because it seems like that's our major goal right now, is finish the comp.
It will.
Deter you or weary you.
No, it will happen at the same time we're doing. The process, the way the process is laid out and the requirements in terms of responding require us essentially to move forward with the process. So, we can accommodate it based on our existing staff.
So, going back to the map that you have, we've got like a little dotted line. So, this, the parcels are in our UGA right now.
That is correct.
Okay. And so, they're just on the edge of our city limits. Do they receive city, they're not on water and sewer and any of that right now? Nobody on, we don't have it established yet, right, all the way down 93rd?
That's correct. And so, as a separate conversation, whatever occurs on the property in terms of development, either within the county or within the city, would require extension of public services to serve that area. But it's anticipated under our comprehensive plan that we will be serving these areas. But again, it will be triggered by the development application itself that happened.
And so, we seem to be popular lately as far as doing annexations. And so, I just wondered why, you know, why do they want to do this? And then too, will it create, because like the other one we were looking at had like wonky pieces that, so they didn't, it wasn't contiguous. And so, now we'll have a little bump out and, you know, we're not creating islands. How does this go with our flow or anything like that as far as, are we going to? Again, I just look at, like, are we creating, we're not creating any islands by doing this.
No.
Yeah. But the outline will be, we're going to have another little bump out, so. Okay?
It's fine with staff. But again, the applicants are also available to answer questions. So, if you'd like to have them also participate, I think they're on. They would also probably be answering the question a little better background of why they're seeking to annex.
I'd be curious, did they speak at the General Assembly meeting?
They were invited, but they didn't come to the meeting.
This feels unusual. I'm just not used to having like back and forth, so that usually we talk with you guys, so. But yeah, I just curious of why.
So, I think I'll go to Councilmember Kathy first, and then she may answer, ask more questions if they may.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just refresh the, is there any requirements being this close to the airport? Or are those all taken care of differently? I can't remember.
Those are all taken care of under the current, whether they develop in the county or develop in the city, the regulations in terms of dealing with the airport and the overlays are the same. When we did the joint plan update back in 2021, the county actually expanded their airport overlay to match ours. So, whatever occurs in the UGA is the same as what would occur in the city.
So, do we have to know anything about the airport requirements or anything before we make decisions?
Not necessarily as part of the annexation. It would be something that we would address as part of any development application that would come through, whether, again, that is application coming through the county or through the city.
And also, does this property have other residents or residential things that come up against it, bug up to it or anything?
To the north, to the south and the east and the west, no. To the north, there may be potential large lot residential. We'd have to double-check our maps. But again, that's addressed as part of the zoning and land use overlay there.
So, there is a possibility of residential north, north of this?
Yeah. There's also, I mean, again, those are the issues that would be dealt with as part of the development review. And they're really, they're already, they're pre-existing conditions. So, whether they choose to annex or not, they exist as they are right.
Okay. Fine. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, and I see a hand up from one of the applicants. Is it Ryan?
Good evening. Yes, I've been working with Mr. Elwin and Mr. Walsh for quite some time, working through these properties as to what they can be utilized for, what they might be, you know, able to be developed to, probably back as far as 2015. And one of the things that we've found is that many of the groups that want to locate and fit within the light industrial zone, the way the code is written, require additional city services, more than sewer and water. It includes fire and police protection. And so, that is one of the reasons that we're annexing or attempting to annex, because it allows for an accelerated development of both properties.
Any other questions? All right. So, with that, what action are you looking forward to this evening? Councilman Ralph Bellser?
I would move that we accept the proposed annexation petitions and initiate the annexation process for the 93rd Avenue Southwest and Case Road Southwest annexation, Tom-25-0128.
Do I have a second?
A second?
Moved by Councilmember Althausen, second by Councilmembers Swarthout. Any discussion on the motion? All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. All right. The motion carries. Thank you very much. And we will start the process. All right. With that, we will now move to our committee reports. And the first one is Public Health and Safety. Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we didn't have any meeting last month, but we have one planned for next week on the 13th. And we have two items. One is the Federal Fire District Care. I think that's what that is, FD Care and Crisis Response. And then the second one is TC District Code Update. That is what I have on my agenda thus far.
Great. Thank you. General Government Committee, Councilmember Althausen.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee has not met since our past council meeting, but we are meeting next week. We have four items on our agenda. We continue our work on the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. Next week, we'll be discussing lands for public purposes and utilities. We also have another annexation that we'll be discussing for Black Lake Belmore, getting the second in our series of updates on the Food System Plan and also discussing an amendment to a contract with the Department of Commerce for our middle housing grant as a result of some of the planning work we're required to do for passage of the law last year about middle housing.
Great. Thank you. Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works Committee will be meeting on Thursday, May 8th at 8:00 a.m. And on their agenda, we have the Small Government Enterprise Agreement Renewal with Esri, which has to do with our provider for GIS. And then we'll, we have a presentation on the annual Barnes Lake Management District Work Plan and Budget Review.
Great. Thank you. Budget and Finance Committee had met on, it was April, I wanted to say March. It was April 25th. And the items that we discussed was monthly financial update by the Finance Department, and those are getting much easier now that we're understanding. And sometimes there's a delay in certain of the updates, especially when it's tax, when we collect taxes from the county and the state. And we had on the community Human Resources Funding Program, and I believe we'll be getting applications for those. It'll be going out. I think we're getting applications. And the Finance Committee will then be reviewing those in early June. Ordinance on Execution of Contracts and Other Legal Documents and Ordinance Number O2025-006. And I believe we took care of that already. No, that's coming up in a future meeting. So, we will be addressing that. So, with that, we will now move to the Mayor and City Administrator Report, and we'll start out with City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Melody, could you share the screen for me real quick? So, the first thing that I wanted to share with you, as promised in my Friday update, were final dates for the Saturday sessions that are going to be associated with our strategic planning process. These are just the Saturday sessions. We just finalized these this afternoon based on the council members' response to our doodle poll. And so, we will give you a more complete listing of our dates. These dates are a little bit later than what we were originally anticipating, as you recall. So, we're going to have to adjust some of our work sessions that we anticipate, at least in the in-between time, before we get to the final work in October and November. So, the three dates that we were able to select for the least impact in terms of missing councilmembers. The first session, Saturday, June 7th from 9:00 to 4:00. The second session, Saturday, June 28th from 9:00 to 4:00. And then the third session, which is after the, excuse me, the staff does a lot of work based on the first two sessions, would be on Saturday, September 20th from 9:00 to 4:00. All three of those are anticipated to be in the fire training room. And I will, as I mentioned, reach out to you and let you know final details on those locations and times as we are moving along. Thank you all for taking the doodle poll. I think there were 16 or 17 dates we asked you to look at. That can be daunting sometimes when you're doing that online. But thank you for taking the time to do that. That's good, Melody. Thank you. Secondly, the good news, as of last Friday, the TBD approval has been certified, the election. We had just shy of 30% voter turnout. And the percentages in terms of in favor of the measure moving forward, we were just about at 77% in favor of that TBD initiative. Huge thanks to the community for their strong vote of confidence and support for Tom Waters' pavement maintenance program that's developed over the last 10 years. Thanks to the council members for your leadership through the process and the advocacy committee that Councilmember Swarthout and former Mayor Pete Komet helped get the people, get information out to people and encourage their vote. And then, for sure, thank you to all of our staff here at City Hall that worked on this project. First, to TED for getting great projects out the door and done over the last 10 years to really demonstrate how and why this money is so important, as well as their help in this session and all of Brandon's presentations to work sessions. And also, a special thanks to the communication staff. They worked both prior to the resolution to put this ballot measure on, or this proposition on the ballot, and continued to get the word out in a real positive way throughout the process. So, thanks to Jason and his team for sure. Secondly, it's just a good news night. We did receive finally our HCP approval and incidental take permit for the operations facility that's proposed out on 79th. Is that correct? So, we received that from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So, we have the authority to move forward with that project when we are done with our design and ready to do that. I am anticipating, as soon as Brandon is ready along with Troy, that we will be coming to the council with a work session to give you an update on where we are with that ops facility. I also, Brittany sent you an invitation this evening, and Chuck wanted me to mention that our community garden partner at the Methodist Church is planning to have an orchard dedication on May 18th at 11:45 a.m. This is in addition to the community garden that we've been working with them for the past several years. It's a 40-tree apple orchard. And this is a project that has been funded through the Metropolitan Parks District. In terms of making you aware of some events that are coming up, May 10th, this Saturday, is the Thurston Forward, which is our, the local DEIB summit that's being primarily sponsored by the Legal of Women Voters. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at SPSCC in Lacey. Registration is required. So, if you're interested in that, please reach out to Legal Women Voters. Jason has been representing the city from a staff perspective. So, if you need some help, he can probably do that as well. They are expecting to have upwards of approximately 150 people for that event. Also, making you aware, the Statistically Valid Survey has begun. And so, that is a random survey sample, as you recall, that's being conducted by DHM Research. And at the same time, right now, our communications staff is working on developing the outreach strategy for the Community Engagement Survey, which is going to be the same survey that will be made available to the entire community right on the heels of the Statistically Valid Survey. So, the details of that outreach strategy are still to come. We intend, as it was asked of us at the last work session where we talked about this with council, that we do as much outreach as possible. And again, Jason and his staff are doing a good job of compiling many, many pages of emails. And we're going to talk about it at our management team meeting tomorrow as well to see how city staff might be able to help. And we anticipate coming to council members with information to help you also reach out to your constituents and encourage their participation when we have that opportunity. And then lastly, for tonight, the Parks Department is in their new location. They are no longer located downstairs. They are at 821 Airport Port Southeast. And it was a, by all accounts, a pretty successful move. Their computers are up and running this Monday morning. So, a shout out to the IT folks who helped a lot with that and our facility staff who really helped with cabling and moving. And it still will take a while for them to be all settled, but they are in what we hope is a temporary home that also then frees up a lot of space for the Police Department to expand and be able to accommodate the added staff and facilities needed for the body worn camera program in that space downstairs. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions?
Councilwoman Kathy?
Sorry, I couldn't find where I raised my hand. Hi, Lisa. I wanted you to know if you could repeat the time of the orchard dedication at the Methodist Church?
Yes, it's 11:45 a.m. And that is on the 18th of May.
I think they're trying to get us to church. That's a Sunday. And one other question. Tell me again what it is that trails in for the O and M project that Fish and Wildlife did?
So, there are Olympia Pocket Gophers on that site or the potential for Olympia Pocket Gophers to be on that site. So, approximately two and a half, perhaps three years ago, we submitted a Habitat Conservation Plan and an application for an incidental take permit to allow us to move forward with construction of that facility. So, that is what has been successfully processed through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Which means that we don't have to do any mitigation?
No. It means that we do have mitigation. We submitted a Habitat Conservation Plan, and I'm going to have to defer to a later time to get any details to you about that mitigation. But when you do a Habitat Conservation Plan, that is what the intent of that is, is to say, in exchange for being allowed to do this construction project, we're going to provide for this mitigation in order to address the potential impacts that our construction project may have on that threatened species.
Maybe it would be helpful at a work session to just review what that mitigation is for that project.
Sure. When we come back with that, I'll talk with Brandon and make sure we have a summary of that for you.
Thank you. Those were my two questions.
Yeah, I just have to say, some of these take so long, we forget what the process was. Because, I mean, three years ago, that's quite a long time to get through that process.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. It was a long time ago. I didn't just forget.
No. I would have to get a refresher also on that. So, for my report, I attend So for my report, I attended the Thurston County EDC meeting on April twenty-third. In that meeting, we, we had a presentation on the Bright Night Project. This is a very large battery storage facility for backup power, emergency power for utilities, power through PSC. It's gonna be located south of Bucauda and probably a little north of Onalaska. And so that will, it's over eighty acres, but they're only developing twelve of those acres. So they're leaving a huge amount of trees around that as a buffer to that particular project. We also had a presentation on the scale-up program, and this has to do with funding sponsored by Washington State Department of Commerce for, for the new biennium regarding startups and entrepreneurships. So this is something that's very helpful. So this is something that helps the small businesses help with starting up. And then that was basically those two large presentations. And then my other announcement, and I think I have checked with almost all council members, but I wanted to make an announcement tonight that our, Mike Matlock will be retiring at the end of this month. And he has been a very amazing community development director. And so with that, you have to make a decision of who the new economic, or the next community development manager, director is going to be. And I couldn't think of anyone better than Brad Mudrid. He is, has been here for several years, I think, what, twelve, seven, nine years? Almost nine years, and has led us through all kinds of projects. And, and everyone who's worked with Brad and including presentations in front of council knows his abilities and his attitude. And I do not know how I would have gone out and would have selected someone more qualified than Brad. So I'm really happy to keep him on staff. So that is my two, so thank you, Brad, for saying yes to that. Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to find talent like that, and we have so many talented staff members in the city. And I'm always happy when we can, we can move them into new leadership roles, so I appreciate that. So with that, I'm going to now go to council reports. And I'm going to start off, Councilmember Agabi, I'll start off with you this evening. Oh, one second, I forgot to turn on your microphone. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. So I only have one announcement, and that is that Mark Daly, the Executive Director for TRPC, is leaving, what, ending of June, something like that?
End of June.
Yeah, so that came in an email yesterday. And other than that, I have no, like, any committee, so, don't have any.
Thank you. Councilmember Althausen?
Thank you, Mayor. The Regional Housing Council has not met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting at the end of the month. I also, the Estuary Work Group has not met either, but there were some developments during the legislative session with authority for that project being transferred from the Department of Enterprise Services to the Department of Ecology. Not sure we really know what that means quite yet, but I expect we'll learn more about that soon. And then I guess I would use sort of my remaining time to just also extend my congratulations to Brad. That's a position well-earned, and we're really excited for you and your new role, and we'll also miss you, Mike, but we're also really excited for you, Brad. That's my report.
And we're great, and I'm sure Mike is going to love his retirement after thirty-five years. Councilmember Swarthout?
I think he's gonna open a little ranch for gophers, you know, so we can, we're gonna have a little gopher population there, that's, that's his goal. I see cake in our future. So I'm the representative for the Thurston Regional Planning Council, and yes, we just received an email that Mark, and so it's kind of ironic, because on Friday, we had our TRPC meeting, and one of our agenda items was for our executive director's annual evaluation, and so we held that, and so it's very, we're gonna be very sad, and he's an amazing person. It's, it's great that he's moving up as far as his planning skills. He's going to the regional, or the South, yeah, Puget Sound Regional Council? Puget, yeah, so he's moving up that way, so, yeah, that's, we're gonna miss him. So that was one of the items that we had on our agenda, and the other item that we had on our agenda was, that made the paper, was the equity language in the regional transportation plan where we had the opportunity to have discussion, the Transportation Policy Board had requested to, I can guess for a better word, I don't like using this word, but scrub, but there was language that they wanted to modify the language in the transportation plan that would be consistent with the recent federal executive orders and priorities. And so we heard from quite a few people and quite a few groups, and we also had a chance to speak ourselves. And so we did not accept their, took action, didn't accept that, their, that action on that item. So anyway, so that's, that was a very engaging conversation, so it was a busy day, so just wanted to share that, and thank you very much. That's the end of my result, my comments, I can't talk tonight, sorry.
I have nights like that also. So I'm gonna go to Councilmember Dahlhoff, and I know you're off camera, but if you could do your report, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor. Kudos to Brad, and also kudos to Mike for his well-deserved retirement. The opioid abatement council meeting for tomorrow was canceled. I have TCOM tomorrow. And then my, the majority of my committee assignments are next week. I have Public Health and Safety, General Government, Law, and then a meeting regarding world relief that I've talked to the mayor and Lisa about. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson?
I have no report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kathy?
Well, I'm disappointed that I'm last tonight, because I've been first for months. You say you're gonna go, come out to this land first, to Zoomland, so I'm not gonna take it personally, I'm just gonna give my report. My report is that my meeting of the Solid Waste Advisory Council was canceled. And next week, I have the Olympic Region Clean Air Meeting along with General Government. And I think that's, I think that's all to report, that I, it was a good week.
Great.
I love the weather.
What's that?
I love the weather.
Oh, yes.
As far as climate change is concerned, I was encouraged about being out in it this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we have no more business before us, so with that, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.